Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to Richmond Common Council meeting for March the 3rd, 2025. Would you please stand for Pledge of Allegiance or remain standing for my prayer for Councilor Gross?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, without doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trust in the Lord with all your heart and lean not on your own understanding. In all ways submit to Him and He will make your path straight. We trust in your divine wisdom, Lord, and we will submit ourselves to your guidance. Lead us in the right direction and bless our discussions. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Gross. Before we call the roll, we need to amend our agenda. Mr. Turner?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add ordinance number 192025, a special ordinance amending the zoning map for a certain parcel from high intensity industrial to District 2 Highway Commercial.
I have a motion and a second to amend the agenda to add ordinance number 192025, spatial ordinance amending the zoning map for a certain parcel from high intensity industrial to Highway Commercial District. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Uh, Gross?
Aye.
Lucinda Wright?
Present.
Bill Engel?
Aye.
Larry Parker?
Aye.
Ann Taylor?
Aye.
Gary Turner?
Aye.
Jane Bumbalo?
Aye.
Justin Burkhardt?
Aye.
And Jerry Purcell?
Here.
All are present.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes of our regular meeting is held on February the 18th, 2025.
Mr. President?
Mr. Purcell?
If there are no corrections, I move that we accept as written.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to accept the minutes of the 18th as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Presentations of petitions, memorials? We have none. Resolution number 1, 2025.
Read.
Please.
Resolution 1, 2025, a resolution of the Richmond Common Council approving an order of the Richmond Plan Commission.
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Beth Fields, Director of Strategic Initiatives. Thank you for the time this evening. As I have shared with you over the past few months, we have been working with a developer for the creation of a subdivision on the east side of town at 37th Street, which is commonly referred to as the Smith Hill subdivision. In working with the developer and in working to move this project forward, this is a public-private partnership for the development of the subdivision. So there is a, an opportunity for us to receive funding from the Indiana Finance Authority through their residential infrastructure housing program to help support the infrastructure for this subdivision. The developer has also applied to the Indiana Economic Development's Regional Economic Acceleration Development Initiative 2.0, which commonly is referred to as Ready 2.0, for funding to assist with the infrastructure as well. That program requires that whatever is granted from that program be matched by the local municipality. This is similar to the Flaherty and Collins project. That was a Ready 1.0 project. So the 2.95 million that we received from the Indiana Economic Development Corporation, that was matched by local funds as a public-private partnership on that development as well. As we look to move this project forward, the next steps are the creation of an economic development area and a housing program for that area to allow us to capture the new TIF that will be created from the development of this subdivision. So the current TIF that is being collected at that location will remain with the overlapping tax districts that are currently receiving that funding. So those overlapping tax districts will not see any reduction in the taxes that they are receiving from that location. We will simply be collecting the increment, the increased amount of assessed value at that location and using that for the infrastructure for this project. The timetable that was provided in your packets, that shows that the next step after we complete this process today would be to introduce a bond ordinance that would show our commitment to taking this bond out for the project. Then the redevelopment commission would pledge the TIF from this area for the repayment of that bond. The amount that we are looking at as part of this project is $4.33 million. The total infrastructure cost is estimated at just over $22 million at this time. So the 4.33 that would come from the residential infrastructure program would be our contribution to that match for the public-private partnership. With the residential infrastructure program, we're able to get an interest rate of 3.11% for this bond issuance versus if we were to do this with a traditional economic development bond as we've done with Flaherty and Collins and Blue Buffalo and others, that would put us at a seven and a half percent interest. So we are, by partnering with the developer and with the Indiana Finance Authority on this project, we are able to save a little over $2 million in interest so that can be put back into the project as they move forward. As a reminder, this project is to build 280 single-family homes. Those homes will range from 1,300 square feet to 4,500 square feet. The plan unit development that is being done through the Richmond Advisory Plan Commission, this is totally separate from that. The developer is still required to go through steps two and steps three in that process. They completed step one, which was the rezoning of the property, so that they could then go ahead and start doing their due diligence, their traffic studies, all of the other studies that they undertake in that process. And then they'll be returning to the Plan Commission with their final designs that will lay out their final product of what that will look like. What we're asking council to do today in this resolution is the redevelopment commission approved an amending declaratory resolution stating that they did want to establish this economic development area and recapture the TIF income for that. That was presented to the Plan Commission and the Plan Commission approved Order 1, 2025, which affirms that the amending declaratory resolution is and does align with the comprehensive plan for the city of Richmond. And now we are asking you as common counsel then to adopt this resolution saying that you do approve the resolution of the Plan Commission. I am happy to answer any questions that you have. I know that was a lot of information. I've kind of been sending you information along the way too, so happy to answer any questions at this time.
Questions at this time?
Mr. President?
Mr. Purcell?
Yes. This, you brought up this residential infrastructure. It's called a grant or...
It is a program that they have through the Indiana Finance Authority and the Indiana...
So it's just a lower interest rate?
Correct. Yes, they accept applications. We were fortunate to be one of the ones that was approved. There were several communities that did not get approved for the program. They had a limited amount of $25 million to...
Okay. Now, was that in our original plan for this? Or how does it affect our original plan for the infrastructure development?
Our original plan for infrastructure and for the infrastructure was to figure out how we would fund that match, looking at this as a public-private partnership with knowing that the ready funds needed a match of $4.33 million. And when this opportunity became available, we knew that this was a good way for us to do that.
Thank you.
Any additional questions?
I'll just make a statement. This makes the third time I've heard this presentation since I'm on redevelopment and I was on the Plan Commission meeting last week. This is a very good deal for Richmond going forward. It's rare to be able to borrow at a three and a half percent interest rate. Rarer yet to be able to defray the cost of paying it back with a TIF, which really is harmless to us in terms of cash flow out the door. So it's really a fantastic way of incentivizing developers to come to Richmond and do these things for us.
Yeah.
Any additional questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
It is council's pleasure.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 1, 2025. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Communications to the mayor. I think we're not going to have any tonight. Is there anything that we need to send to him or request of him? Hearing none. Board of Works and Safety, minutes of the meetings are included in your packets. Do we have any questions or comments? Hearing none. Reports of department heads, standing committees? No reports. Any miscellaneous business?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we read ordinance 132025, 152025, 162025, 172025, 182025, and 192025 by title only.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to read the ordinances 13, 15, 16, 17, 18, and 192025 by title only. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Ordinance number 132025, a general ordinance amending Chapter, I think it's 120, of the Richmond City Code regarding security alarms. Want me to explain it? It's not as detailed as the last one.
Mr. Burkhardt, do you want this assigned to the committee or...?
Yes, please.
Okay.
I don't have to explain it.
Sign to finance, please.
Ordinance 15, an ordinance adopting a new voluntary green power rider for services rendered by Richmond Power and Light.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Get to visit with you guys a little bit early this, this evening. I'm Tony Foster, General Manager of Richmond Power and Light. Ordinance 152025 is an ordinance adopting a new voluntary green power rider. On February 3rd, 2025, the Richmond Power and Light Board of Directors passed Resolution 3, 2025, recommending the approval of a green power rider which is available to impasse participating communities. This proposed rider will provide customers the ability to purchase electricity sourced from renewable sources through the Indiana Municipal Power Agency. I'd like to stress, this program is entirely voluntary and customers would have to enroll into the program to participate. The ordinance provides the details of the program, which were also covered at the January 20th and February 3rd Richmond Power and Light Board of Directors meetings. If ordinance 152025 is passed, we would include this in our rate tariff and start offering this green power rider to our customers. We are in no rush, so if you want to take this and study it further, that's not a problem, but we just wanted to get this introduced tonight.
Thank you. Questions of the general manager at this time?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Foster, as I understand it, there are some benefits to companies using this green power. Am I correct?
Yes. The reason we are actually doing this a little early this year, because we were planning on just rolling this into any changes we make to the rate tariff later in the year as part of our rate study, is that we do have customers requesting this. This is beneficial for them when it comes to their ESG scores and it gives them an opportunity to, to source green power without having to create their own solar or other mechanisms if their company wants to meet certain green goals.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. President?
Mr. Turner?
Tony, you might just explain to the public what all forms and sources of green power are.
Sure. So IMPA, their portfolio includes wind and solar beyond what we have locally. They have contracts with large-scale wind and solar power that makes up our portfolio of energy that we receive here in Richmond. So what this does is basically it's a set aside of green energy for that company so that they can say they are in fact receiving green power.
We don't have any hydropower?
We do not. We have nuclear coal, nuclear coal, natural gas, wind, and solar. Later this year, we'll have battery storage.
Any additional questions? Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is the third time we've heard this.
Make a motion that we advance ordinance 152025 to second reading.
Second.
By title only.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to advance ordinance 152025 to second reading and read by title only. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Ordinance number 152025, an ordinance adopting a new voluntary green power rider for services rendered by Richmond Power and Light.
Final comments? It is council's pleasure.
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
I'm sorry. Public hearing, that's right. Ordinance 152025 is on public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak in favor? Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak in opposition?
Move for engrossment.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to engross. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Call the question.
Second.
Please call the question.
Doug Gross?
Aye.
Lucinda Wright?
Aye.
Bill Engel?
Aye.
Ann Taylor?
Aye.
Gary Turner?
Aye.
Jane Bumbalo?
Aye.
Justin Burkhardt?
Aye.
Jerry Purcell?
Aye.
And Larry Parker?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion carried. Thank you.
Ordinance 16, 2025, a special ordinance amending prior special designation ordinance number 412023 to update requirements previously adopted with the designation of Dora known as the Depot District.
Good evening. Lindsay Darnell, Community Development Coordinator. The mayor's office is requesting an amendment to ordinance 412023 regarding the designated outdoor refreshment area otherwise known as Dora in the Depot District. At the request of the Depot District Association and based on feedback from local businesses, we propose the following changes to enhance community engagement and economic activity in the area. Addition of Wednesdays. Currently, the Dora is, the Dora activation is limited to specific days, Thursdays, Fridays, and Saturdays. We propose expanding the schedule to include Wednesdays, aligning with their summer events Wine Walk Wednesday. We're also requesting to change the activation start time. The current start time is 4:00 PM, which limits daytime participation. We propose adjusting the activation time to begin at 12:00 PM noon, allowing for increased daytime foot traffic and a greater economic impact for participating businesses. These changes will provide a more flexible and business-friendly approach while maintaining the integrity and objection, objectives of the Dora program. We believe this amendment will contribute to the continued success of the Depot District by fostering a more vibrant and welcoming environment.
Thank you. Questions?
Mr. President?
Mr. Gross?
Do we know how many days last year they actually utilized the Dora?
I don't know how many days last year, but when I spoke with Tracy Robinson, she did tell me that the Wine Walk Wednesdays will be in June, July, and August and will be the main reason why they need the hours or days amended. The tentative dates are June 18th, July 16th, and August 13th. The August date will be in partnership with the Richmond Symphony Orchestra.
Additional questions or comments? Mr. Gross, would you like to have this to the safety committee?
Sure.
It'll go to the safety committee then. Thank you.
Ordinance number 172025, a general ordinance amending Chapter 91 of the city of Richmond Code regarding animals. Want that explained or refer it to somebody?
Pardon me?
Do you want that explained or refer it to somebody?
Please explain it and then we will refer it.
Well, all fines for animals are deposited with or paid at the city clerk's office. And what we have are people that will have an animal out that's not tagged or licensed and they'll come in and they'll pay the fine and then they go home. Then they'll get another ticket for the same thing. And so this would just say that they have to have their dogs or cats registered and tagged before they can pay the fine. And like I said in the memo, it's not about making money. It's a public safety thing because they have to have proof of rabies.
Right. They need to, they need to be checked for the rabies tag and things like that. I don't, I don't see any sense in having to put this to committee unless there's someone on council that really has additional questions. It seems to me it's pretty black and white that we should go ahead and pass this, but does anybody have any questions or comments?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Engel?
I guess, how is it enforced?
We have an animal control officer and if they find animals out or if they have a report of animals out, they, they can either pick them up or, you know, make sure that they're tagged or whatever. Yeah. If they're running loose, they have to have tags on, but they can't be running loose either. So they can pick them up and that's why we have a pound or an...
Are we talking, are we just talking about dogs or dogs and cats?
Dogs and cats. Mm-hmm.
Cats, there's a whole lot more cats running loose than dogs.
Well, I know that, but it's still in the ordinance.
So when the animal control officer picks up an animal and takes them to...
Now it'd have to be Henry County, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
Who do we have a contract with?
Um, I don't know.
Wouldn't it?
Is there a contract with Newcastle?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
We can't have one here.
So it's then...
It's with Henry County.
Okay. It is, it is then recorded so that...
You know, if a person wants to go, I don't know what the process is for them to get their dog out, but
I guess that's...
They would have to go pay them or whatever, you know?
They don't come to the clerk's office and pay? Okay.
Mr. President?
We, excuse me, we use the same procedure that the county uses in boarding of the dogs and the cats, correct?
I don't know what their process is.
Yeah, that is correct. Yes.
I'm sorry.
With these questions, I just respectfully ask that it be assigned to the committee.
Okay.
Which committee?
Safety.
Safety.
Okay. Ordinance 182025, a special ordinance authorizing the approval of a statement of benefits for a property owner applying for deductions under Indiana Code 6-1.1-12.1.
Mr. Gross, would you want to speak? Oh, sorry.
No, Beth is.
No, we're gonna let Beth.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is a request from A House Tool for a property tax abatement. The investment that they will be making is $275,400. This will help them to retain 99 jobs that they currently have and it will create new jobs through this process. The minimum hourly wage for their existing positions is $18 and they expect the minimum hourly wage for the new positions to be $24. And they do have an hourly health insurance benefit of $8. We do request that this be referred to the tax abatement committee.
Any questions of Beth at this time? Any comments from you, Mr. Gross?
Nope. I'll talk about it next time.
Okay. Goes to the tax abatement.
Ordinance 192025?
Yes.
Excuse me, a special ordinance amending the zoning map for a certain parcel from high intensity industrial district to highway commercial district.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Dustin Purvis, Planning Director. Ordinance 19 is a request to rezone the property at 2477 US Highway 35. This property is located just north of the I-70 interchange. It's directly across the street from the Loves Travel Stop. The property is currently vacant, but it's zoned for high intensity industrial uses. So the petitioner is asking that it be rezoned to Highway Commercial so that they can develop a gas station and convenience store on the site. This evening, I'm just requesting that it be referred to the Advisory Plan Commission for public hearing during their meeting on March 23rd at 5:30 PM. But if you have any questions for me tonight, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Questions from council at this time? Hearing none. Signed to Plan Commission.
Thank you.
Ordinance on second reading, ordinance number 142025, an appropriation ordinance amending ordinance number 35-2024, known as the 2025 Civilian Salary Ordinance.
Mr. Burkhardt?
Mr. President, we, I've spoken to the Park Department and also with a little bit of, of help and guidance. The Finance Committee has reviewed this and recommends approval. This is the reorg or restructuring bill. I don't know if you would like to chime in on the golf.
Yes. This is the restructuring of the, I think the top tier of, of management of the golf course.
Of Highland, Highland, of course, yeah.
And it, I believe it was approved by the Park Board at its last...
Correct.
Thank you. Any questions of these two gentlemen at this time? Hearing none. We'll go to public hearing. Ordinance 142025 is on second reading, which is public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak in favor of this ordinance?
David Carpenter, 400 Richmond Avenue. I support this ordinance and I thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. Anybody else in the audience that'd like to speak in favor of this? Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak in opposition of this ordinance?
Move for engrossment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to engross. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Call the question.
Second.
Please call the question.
Okay. Doug Gross?
Aye.
Lucinda Wright?
Aye.
Bill Engel?
Aye.
Ann Taylor?
Aye.
Gary Turner?
Aye.
Jane Bumbalo?
Aye.
Justin Burkhardt?
Aye.
Jerry Purcell?
Aye.
And Larry Turner?
Aye.
Larry Parker. Larry Turner.
Motion carried.
Happens all the time.
Is there any unfinished business to come before council at this time?
Move for adjournment.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Parker.
Finance Committee has reviewed the bills and moved for approval in an amount of $7,783,410.68. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes from February 3rd. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill is to be approved.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Parker.
Finance Committee has reviewed the bills and moved for approval in an amount of $7,783,410.68. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes from February 3rd. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill is to be approved.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Parker.
Finance Committee has reviewed the bills and moved for approval in an amount of $7,783,410.68. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the bills of $7,783,410.68. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there any unfinished business at this time? We have quite a few things on the agenda tonight. The first of which is to open bids on one new mobile power unit for the line department as previously approved in the 2025 capital budget. I do have the proof of publication for when we did go out to bid on this, so would request your approval of the, first, your approval of this.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Parker.
Moved to place. Proof of publication on file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We do have one bid. This is for 2025 Altech F E N E X. I'm not sure how you pronounce that. I would assume if it's an Altech, it's coming from the Altech Service Center in London, Ohio. The price is $87,583. To answer the question that Mr. Goss asked at the last board meeting, we budgeted $100,000 for this. We request to be able to take this under advisement and come back at the next meeting.
Moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second to take it under advisement and prepare for the next meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is to request to receive bids for one new 2025 compact pickup truck for the engineering department as previously approved in the budget. We will be trading in this cute little 2013 Ford Transit cargo van that has approximately 107,000 miles on it. It's lived a long life driving around the streets of Richmond for the last 12 years, so definitely can use a new truck. So just as a reminder, we actually went out for bid last fall on this vehicle. And there were, Ford was no longer taking orders on this, so we thought we would start early this year. So this is a repeat from last year. Again, we're just requesting to go out to bid.
Moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to go out to bid on this, not cute little vehicle, but... All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. The next one that is in the 2025 budget as well is a request to receive bids for one new 2025 Plus. So depending on when this actually gets manufactured, it could be a '26 or '27 model year. 55-foot bucket truck for the line department as previously approved in the budget. The trade would be a 2015 Freightliner bucket truck with approximately 50,000 miles and 10,000 hours. Again, our miles are low because these trucks spend the majority of their time idling, thus the 10,000 hours on the engine. And depending on who you, or where you get your information, the multiplier on the number of miles per hour could be anywhere from 10 to 50. So the amount of equivalent miles on the engine and related hardware is astronomical for this truck. So anyway, we are requesting to go out for bid. These types of vehicles do take, have been taking two to three years to receive.
Wow.
So moved.
Second.
Jerry did. We have a motion and a second to take this out to bid. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is also a vehicle request. And the request is to move forward with the purchase of two new electric vehicles for Parallax as previously approved in the 2025 capital budget. Parallax would like to move forward with the purchase of two Tesla electric vehicles. They have spoken with several individuals, including the police chief from Burgersville. Apparently, they've converted their entire fleet to Teslas and have had very good luck. The town of Daleville has also started implementing Teslas into their fleet and apparently have had some success. The Tesla sales method is basically single source. In Indiana, there's only one place that you can purchase these vehicles. And pricing is standard. There is no negotiations. After checking with AJ, was determined that we wouldn't be in violation of any Indiana purchasing laws due to the nature of their sales model and the fact that this is below statutory bidding thresholds. Model Y is being updated this year, so they're coming out with a new model later this year, so the current Model Ys are deeply discounted. We budgeted $50,000 per vehicle, actually a little bit more so that we can buy some chargers. But approximately $50,000 per vehicle based upon pricing at the time the budget was prepared late in 2024. We can currently acquire a current Model Y for less than $39,000 with the tax credit. And we have checked that the tax credit would be provided to us in the form of a direct rebate, not a credit since we are a nonprofit. As a reminder, Parallax is self-funded, meaning no ratepayer funds are used for their operations. We felt that using Parallax to test the use of electric vehicles for the utility would be a great starting place. And so we are requesting to move forward with the purchase of two new Tesla Model Ys as presented. And I went through that rather quickly, so I'd entertain any questions that you have.
Yeah, Mr. Foster, so I know you and I have had discussion a little bit around this as far as the newer model, the older model. And I understand that this is also Tesla being a brand that not everyone is familiar with, might have questions. There could be a question of, you know, again, because this is a later model, the question of price. A lot of these are seemingly higher-priced vehicles at times. But, you know, it really comes back around to kind of putting our money where our mouth is as far as energy efficiency. And I think it's a bold move, but certainly a move that, you know, we can really see benefit from.
Absolutely. And just to put it in perspective, the last vehicle we purchased for Parallax was a compact pickup truck like we're bidding tonight. I believe it was upwards of $46,000 or $47,000. So these are definitely, have come down in price over the years. I know EVs were expensive several years ago when they first came out, but they're becoming more affordable, as you can see here. So we are going to be retiring one vehicle. It's like a 2012 or maybe even, no, it's even older than that, Ford Ranger. And then this other, the second vehicle that we'd be acquiring is because we have grown the staff at Parallax, so we are short one vehicle for the staff at Parallax. Thank you. It's certainly a neat opportunity. Are there any other questions for Mr. Foster?
Mr. Chairman. Tony, what is the vehicle used for? Is it basically for in-town travel?
Yeah, servicing our customers. One of the gentlemen that will be using the, one of them, he is on call 24/7. If one of our customers goes down in the middle of the night, he'll be driving this and going to our different substations where we have equipment, things like that. So we, just like our lineman, the Parallax team is all over the city every day, either selling, installing, making repairs, or making improvements.
Okay, thank you.
And the Model Y is the mid-size vehicle, which would give them more room to carry tools, equipment, supplies, things like that. In case there's a question, did you cover the color of the car and maybe how you planned to outfit it? Logo? One of the reasons why, yeah, we kind of came to you tonight. This was a late addition to the agenda is because when we found out that we could get these on sale, there's only three or four white ones left in Indianapolis. And so we definitely wanted to take advantage of getting a white one to make sure that it matches the rest of our fleet. And then we have had some conversations about other wraps and advertising, but something we'll be discussing in the near future.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Purcell.
If there's no further questions, I would move that we approve purchase by Parallax of two Tesla current Model Y EVs.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to purchase the Tesla Model Y for Parallax as previously approved in the 2025 budget. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. The final action item on the agenda tonight is the approval of the second quarter ECA, which stands for Energy Cost Adjustment. So the residential ECA increases by .000215 cents per kilowatt hour. That's basically two tenths of one cent. So when looking at the graph on the right-hand side, in essence, the ECA is remaining flat this quarter. Incredibly small uptick, but it is basically flat for the quarter. Any questions for Mr. Foster?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve ECA rates for the second quarter of 2025.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the ECA rates for the second quarter of 2025. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. In lieu of one educational item tonight, I have several updates on some projects, but I'll keep it brief. The first is our, we're calling it the Temporary Transformer, but it's our large power transformer that we acquired from AEP that came from Texas. It was delivered last week. The top picture shows this transformer being offloaded into the substation. The next thing that will be occurring is that the transformer itself will be slid onto its permanent pad. And then bushings, lightning arrestors, radiators, fans, and other accessories will be installed. Then oil will be installed, then the unit will be tested before it is connected to our system. And so we anticipate it should be fully operational in about three weeks. It's been a long time coming, but it's finally here and we're very lucky that we were able to acquire this. Next thing, we did receive our three-year accreditation or certification as an American Public Power Association Reliable Public Power Provider, or RP3 as they call it. The certification is good for '25 through '28, and it looks at all aspects of our operations and benchmarks us against our peers in areas of reliability, safety, training, disaster planning, system planning, physical and cybersecurity, safe work practices, employee development, the use of participation and mutual aid, capital planning, and much, much more. It's a team effort to put this together, but it is simply a representation of all the policies and procedures and things that we do on a daily basis. It is nice to do this every three years because it does kind of help us keep in mind areas of improvement for the utility. But it is a prestigious award, so we're proud to be an RP3 community for three more years.
Yay.
Excellent.
A few other projects. We have started working with the auditors for the 2024 audit. So as a reminder, we have an independent audit completed every year. Actually, IMPA pays for this. Since we are their second-largest company or customer, the bondholders want to make sure that the large customers for EMPA are in good shape. So we do that every year in addition to a State Board of Accounts audit if they choose to audit us during the year. So we've had our kickoff meetings. Some of the GASB data requests have already been submitted. And later this month and early April is when they have it scheduled to be on-site to complete the audit. So that'll be taking a little bit of our time. We have started the rate study project and held a kickoff meeting a couple of weeks ago, and we've already received data requests, and we're starting to provide that data. So I will be in touch in the coming months as we start getting some feedback from our consultants on that. Year-end financials are complete, and I'll be sending those to you this week as well as the February update. Hopefully, I'll get that to you tomorrow. The upcoming EMPA workshop, I just thought I would highlight this for you, is next Wednesday, 9:30 at the EMPA offices. The topic is solar and the impact on the utility. I know you all receive a lot of questions about solar. Excuse me. So just thought I'd bring this to your attention. If this is something you're interested in attending, let us know, and we can get you registered. They are free to attend. And let's see, what else do I have? Oh, okay. And last week, board members Justin, Jane, and Jerry and I attended the American Public Power Association Legislative Rally in Washington, D.C. with other EMPA member communities as well. In addition to the meetings and speakers we got to hear, we personally met with Congressman Shreve, Senator Young. We met with Senator Banks staffer. We crossed Bernie Sanders in the hallway. So we didn't get to meet with him though, but we saw Bernie.
Autograph?
And topics of discussion when we did hold those meetings were the tax-exempt bonds and how they affect not only the municipally-owned utilities, but cities and towns all across the United States. And, excuse me, how important those are, the effects of tariffs on our upcoming projects. And I always brought up our coal ash project. So Chairman Justin, do you have any additional comments or anything?
Yeah, so first and foremost, thank you for hosting us. And we had a fantastic few days there. Lot of moving in between, back and forth from offices, but a lot of good discussion. It's good to know that Richmond Power and Light is well-represented in Washington, D.C. amongst our peers. EMPA is a great, a great representation for us from Richmond Power and Light's standpoint. They do a very nice job, and I think that we let it be known that Richmond Wayne County is very important in the state of Indiana.
Very good.
Jane or Jerry, do you have any comment?
I agree with everything that you said. It was a wonderful trip. I always really appreciate the opportunity to go and just to see the work behind the scenes. It's very impressive and very much appreciated.
I'd just like to say it was a great trip, and I was very surprised in going into the halls of both Congress and the Senate that we were able to sit down and have one-on-one conversations with our representatives. And as Tony had said, one of the big subjects was the taxing of interest on bonds. And I think we got the message across pretty strongly that that goes against what this administration's plans are for being competitive in the world markets if we start taxing the bonds on infrastructure projects. And I think that was well-received, and like I said, it was a great opportunity.
Thank you both.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Engel.
I just wondered if there was any response to bringing up the CCR project.
Actually, Senator Young, no, it was Senator Banks staffer immediately knew what CCR was. So it is a subject that apparently they get a lot of feedback on.
Oh, okay, good, good. Glad you brought it up.
Bernie says hello.
I said, we know that guy. No, we know that guy. Who is that guy? It's Bernie Sanders.
But that concludes my comments for tonight. Like I said, we had a lot of miscellaneous things to go over, so I didn't have another educational component. But that concludes my remarks. Fantastic. Any further questions for Mr. Foster this evening? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Adjourn.